Good evening and welcome to the school committee, acting school committee meeting of December 12th, 2024. We're going to begin with our pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
We do not, but we will be meeting an executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Any comments from the public tonight? Or we just all here to observe?
Go first grade!
All right then, we'll go right on to our celebration of learning, which is the holiday music.
Hello, everybody. I am Miss Mitten. I do not take any credit for this beautiful singing and this song. This is all Miss Bro. She couldn't be here tonight. This is Teagan. She is the assistant director of the musical. So she was able to join us.
Yeah, Teagan!
And I have the first readers from Miss Mitten's class and Miss Berry's class in here come in and give you a little bit of their song that they put together. So we're going to walk straight in towards, that way towards Mr. Ross, okay?
Oh, right there.
I don't know.
Hi guys, can you see your faces?
Look how wonderful you look!
There we go!
There we go. You're doing circles. There we go. There we go. There's Teagan.
Oh, look at her!
One down the playroom, Mr. Ross is moving.
Charlie, face this way.
There you go.
Right, we're going to look at Teagan. Are we going to look at Teagan?
Look that way, Clara. Can we slide here? Let's move down two inches.
There is a way to live each day. For simple words, love is the way. Those words are all we need to say. To show we care, love is the way. Love is the way is our guiding star. It will hold us so close come one day. Through space and time and from here and from far. It's clear to see, love is the way. Those words are a way to live each day. For simple words, love is the way. Those words are all we need to say. To show we care, love is the way. To show we care, love is the way. To show we care, love is the way.
Can you guys give your bow that Miss Bro taught you?
Did I wear my shoes today?
Good job! Thank you so much. That was fantastic. Thank you for coming to sing to us.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
You learned another language. ASL is another language.
I got to come to the concert because I'm Theo's mom. Theo's in second grade. And I saw your concert the other night and you all did so wonderful up on the big stage with all those people. Great job. I hope you're all so proud of yourselves.
First grade parents, another night out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great job, Teagan!
Good directing, Teagan.
Mr. Ross said check with your parents, but there they are. You can probably take something to go. We'll give you a few minutes to debrief your parents. Go ahead.
Appreciate terms.
Awesome. Miss Mitten, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Just right for the season.
Great words. Great words to that song, too.
Especially like, two of the girls have love on their shirt to go with the song. Theo and his friend Emmy have sang like a little solo intro. So I've been hearing that song since September.
Yeah, it was nice. Really great having a live streaming component.
While they're getting their snacks, I would like to, part of my update, but I'll just do it now, is thank Paula. And Paula, you let me know who else needs to be thanked because this wouldn't have happened. This is not what Mr. Ward and I do, so thank you.
Jackie did all the baking.
Jackie did a wonderful job. So thank you to Jackie and to the whole admin team for the lovely presents.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
Kudos, give our kudos to Jackie, too.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you!
Have a good night. Andy, I think I will have you work the door because of the basketball game.
All right.
It's just kind of loud.
Which is good.
When you're clapping, that means we did something well. I like that.
Her eye on the lint balls through the whole thing was pretty loud.
That was adorable.
That was.
And so the concert was absolutely fantastic on Tuesday.
It was.
I watched it livestreamed.
Yeah.
My father-in-law was an elementary school music teacher for like 30 years. So my husband got to see a lot of concerts over his lifetime. And he said that was absolutely one of the best that he's ever seen.
Aww, great.
It was well done. Very, very well done.
I like, I like the idea of her including the sign, signing in with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a fantastic thing for the kids. All right then, let's move on. We're going to skip progress monitoring for tonight. We'll have an update in January. And we will move on to the consent agenda. And I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Do any of you have any questions of any of the reports or any of the administrators? Looks like everybody's been pretty busy from what I could see.
I was going to ask Brandon for a sneak peek into the, what he's working on with Kelsey for the student athlete eligibility. But he's not here, so we'll get a sneak peek into that next time.
Could I ask Sharon, are you there? Hi, honey. I was looking at your table here and I...
Did I make a math problem?
No, I remember, I'm brand new to this. So my question is, on your, your table, you have five plus one, five plus one. Could you tell me what that means?
Okay, sorry about that.
No.
That means referrals. So we have a fifth grade referral.
Okay.
And we have a 10th grade referral.
Okay, wonderful.
So they're not actually on, like they're not technically in special ed just yet.
So if you look down at the bottom, it says referrals in process and it says two.
Yes, yes. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
So would your fifth grade referral be the same one from last month?
Yes, same one.
So sometimes it just takes a little while?
Yeah, it takes, well, by law, we have 45 school days to get it all done from beginning to end.
Okay, so it can wrap into two months?
Depending on our psychologist and her availability.
Yep, great.
Anybody else have anything to add? It's nice to have our tree out there from the Beelers.
Yeah, yes. Looks beautiful.
Thank Andy for getting that. All right then, we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
You bet. There's only a couple of bullets. Just one more time, I want to say thank you to Paula and Jackie. This was lovely and they did a great job. So thanks again. School break for winter, the winter holiday break is a week from tomorrow, the 20th. So we get almost, the kids and the staff will have almost two weeks off, which is a great calendar for everybody to take a little break. Well deserved break. And lastly, on Monday, I'll say it now, but on Monday morning, we're going to do our new protocols for our safety drills. Where we're going to bring the kids into it a little more. And I plan on sending out a blackboard message to the parents on Monday night. Because what could happen is a young person could go home and say to their parents, "I learned about going out a window in an emergency today." And they'll be like, "What's that all about?" So our practice has always been shelter in place, be quiet, find a safe place in the classroom. But under our Alice training over the last year and a half, the staff know they have options. And they play the option that best suits the situation for safety. And what we're going to do is we're going to slowly bring the kids into that process. Because we don't want to have an emergency and the kids don't know what to do. I mean, we train them for fire drills. So we're not going to do anything that will create trauma. We use the word safety drill. We don't call them lockdowns. As a matter of fact, I am going to just call on you in a minute about that book, okay? So we've done a lot of work with the staff. Now it's time to start just putting our little toe in the pond with the kids. Just to have conversations. The way we're going to do this on Monday is we're going to have an extended safety drill. It'll be a learning moment. It'll be a chance to teach a little bit about safety. So we'll quiet the building down. Everybody will be in their rooms. A few of us will test doors. A few of us will just check emergency radios like we always do. But the teachers have like a plan that they're going to implement on Monday. And then on Monday night, I'll let the parents know what we did. And then tell them, hey, there's a safety forum a week from tonight, on the 19th, where Joe Jordan and I will explain what we did and where we're heading with their students. So everybody's informed. Why don't you just give us a little tidbit on some of the work you've done and what you plan to do Monday morning? Thank you.
So we purchased a book through our Alice program that we've been being trained in. And it's for kindergarten pre-K through second grade. So it's about a little classroom of ants and their teacher ant. And there's a wolf that is coming after their building. And Alice does a great job kind of explaining how they want you to teach it as acting elementary school. I went through the book and talked with John about things we probably don't want to say that are in the book just because we don't think that we need to tell the kids, there's a wolf coming in our building, things like that. We use more of the idea that there could be a fire in the building and we have to get out. Or there could be green goo, you always say, spilled in the parking lot. We have to hide in our classrooms to stay safe from the goo. So I went through and kind of made some changes to that book. We met with the K-2 team today and talked about how they're going to use this book to help this conversation during the lockdown. And just make it more friendly for our community and our environment.
Of course, age appropriate. We're not going to read the, you know, the Ant Hill teacher to the eighth graders. But you know, Mark Noel and his team are ready, set, go to have conversations with the older kids just by starting and saying, "We've never really talked to you in a safety drill before." How many ways out of this room are there? Get them thinking. Well, there's a door and there's a door there. What about the windows? We're on the first floor. And just start the conversation. We're not practicing anything. So little, little steps. Oh, Marianne's been great with her team, getting them on board. We have great resources for the younger kids, less so resources for the older kids that are engaging. But I'm getting Alice trained next month, the 6th and 7th, at Thomas College. And then I'll be able to bring all those resources to the school. You have to be a trainer and you have to pay for the dashboard to get them. And then there are very in-depth lesson plans for just about any grade level, if we choose to go that route. That was, I know it's kind of a longer update. I was going to put it on the agenda and I didn't. So I thought I'd use this opportunity to do it.
Yeah, that's true.
Because it's a week from tonight for that safety forum and we're looking forward to it. Yeah. And that's it for me.
Good. Thank you, John. All right, let's move on then to our committee reports. And we'll start with the policy.
We had just a couple of short updates to the fragrance-free environment policy and procedure. We had a good discussion about visitors wearing fragrances or having fragrances in the building. And kind of it just happened that the conference room that we were supposed to be in, they walked in and it was just smelled of cigarette smoke. And like John and Brandon are not like dainty little flowers. And if they couldn't stand to be in there, it was, it was tough. So we updated the sample email signature that the staff can put in their emails if they want to. They don't have to. Just kind of requesting visitors to the building to try not to wear, you know, really strong rose perfume or hand lotion or, you know, realize that if you're smelling of smoke, maybe switch your sweatshirt before you come in the building.
Unfortunately, most people that smoke don't know they smell like smoke.
No, I think they know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they know that they don't know.
But they don't smell it themselves. But they, they realize that they probably do.
Is there anything that ever goes to the families, like as part of the handbook or mentioned on Parents Night? I mean, it's kind of, it's pretty commonplace in a lot of places, schools, hospitals.
The Y, actually. Someone mentioned something when I was in a class this week. A woman like pointed the fan at the wall to kind of circulate the air and went up and told the instructor. And the instructor was like, "Just for everyone to know, we are a fragrance-free or fragrance-low facility." So she reminded everybody in that class to try not to use really strongly scented Bath and Body Works, you know, lotions and whatever. She was like, "Please wear deodorant, but not like strong lotion."
Well, you told me not to. The answer is not yet to your question. And we've talked with Andy about some signage that would be, you know, a gentle reminder type signage. You know, we have a smoke-free environment sign out there, so we'd rather go with a fragrance-free.
Do you get a lot of issues?
With smoking?
No, no, no. Fragrances in throughout the school.
I'll give you my candid answer. When marijuana was voted in, that really was a game changer. And it became legal so people could do grow operations, right, which is fine. But it really creates a scent. And it's not as much now, but boy, when that law changed a few years back, I quickly noticed the difference. Excuse me. And sometimes, you know, the little kid's backpack smells like it. And certainly some first grader wasn't out smoking weed. It was, it came from home and it had that scent. So I've worked with parents before about cleaning some of those things because the other kids in the classroom are like, "There's a skunk in the room." And it definitely disrupts the educational environment, to answer that question.
Yeah.
Not so much now as it was when the law first changed, I noticed.
Yeah. So, so those were just updates?
So the first two were updates. And then I think Brandon kind of helped write the policy on hiring and evaluation of coaches and co-curricular staff. So that one's a first read tonight.
Yeah, I thought that was very conclusive and very well done. All right, so then I'll look for a motion to...
I did on the, I read through it, but I was, I think I was questioning, does it have to go to the internal staff first?
Yes.
Even if we had an external person the previous year?
Yeah, we would. Okay, so wait, explain that second part again.
So, thinking of basketball.
Sure.
We have an external person coaching this year. Next year, does he get priority or do we ask the teachers first?
I don't have the policy right in front of me. I'm going to look for it. Did we talk about that? Because I think it needs to be reposted, correct?
No, I thought we said not to.
I thought with the contracts that it...
Co-curricular staff who desire to return and if they have received an overall satisfactory annual evaluation will be given first priority to return to their previous position.
Right.
So it's in writing. Now, we didn't have that in writing. So we do have an external that's, did a great job and the A.D. would recommend that external do take the position. It's sounding like this policy will support that.
Yes.
Even if there was a new, like let's say we hired in a new staff member that was really great at basketball.
My impression is you have to wait your turn.
Yep, okay.
So now, yeah, that's kind of what the...
We didn't have it in writing before. We're kind of working from it, right? That's why we need the policy. No, thank you for helping me with that.
So it says, all positions will be posted if vacant. But if someone from this year gets a good evaluation, next year says, you know, is, they would be offered the position. Or if they say, "I want that position again," they would get it. It's not vacant, so it's not posted again.
Okay.
I'm going to recommend talking to the A.D. about, at the end of the season, when there is an evaluation of whatever that season is, the conversation about next year happened right then.
Yes.
With a verbal, like this is what we're planning on, you around, and then things change. People move.
Sure.
That might be a person for next year, but moved to kind of other someplace.
Right.
So now all of a sudden, it's open and we follow the policy to retain that position.
So I, I think we should recommend that she has a question in her evaluation at this point.
Right.
Do you think you want this job again next year? And then, you know, if they say, "No way, I'm out." Or like, you know, if it's an eighth grade parent, their kid, their kid's not here anymore. Maybe they don't want to coach it again. So they can, they might know at the end of the season, "No, I don't want to do this next year." And then we'll know. It's open next year.
It's sort of their position to lose if they choose to or it doesn't work, right?
Yeah.
And then edit, editing stuff just to make it all match.
Yeah.
And there's like an extra period under the hiring and assignment of coaches. But that stuff will get caught because it's the first read.
Yes.
So then I'll look for a motion to accept EBBCA registry environment and EBBCA-R registry environment procedure to be accepted as reviewed and approved.
So moved?
One second. Oh, she's already, okay, yep.
Okay, so with CJ and Jeanette, any discussion, any more discussion about those? All in favor? Okay, and then our other one is, the new one is, is the one we were just talking about. JJIB, hiring and evaluation of coaches and co-curricular staff. I would look for a motion to accept this as a first reading tonight.
So moved?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Long-range planning, did you meet?
We did. We met tonight and we talked about possibly putting a extra article forward to the, at budget time to cover some servers, firewalls, reconfiguring the whole server room and consulting fees that would go over the course of three years. So the first three things would be fully funded to be done, the servers and the firewall. And then the consulting would be like a three-year plan. So it would be part of the consulting. So all of that adds up to about $62,000. NutriKids was on the list, but we think there's some grant money that's going to come in. And that's, you know, the NutriKids cost was about $10,000. So it's kind of good that we've got the grant money possibly coming. The server for the NutriKids, right? Was it the server?
It's the server that's in the kitchen that runs our kitchen program. And what happened was there were some overages in our nutrition fund that allowed us, I think roughly $14,000 ballpark, right, Paula? That we can only spend on nutrition-related expenses. And that was a need that we had. So that was the decision that was made. And we don't expect that the state won't fulfill that piece for us.
Okay. Well, it's going to be nice to be able to finally get our technology programs and equipment all updated the way it should be.
Yeah. Matt's got some good, good planning, good list of things going that will be needed.
Good. Well, thank you for that. All right, and how about negotiations?
We've been meeting with the teachers. Do you want to?
No, I said I did one, you did one, so.
Oh. And next month, hopefully, we'll be starting?
We'll have to, yeah, it will be back in January. We had a date yesterday, but we didn't have the internet. And their team reached out to me and said, "We need the internet to do our work." I'm like, "You're right." So the internet came on just before our meeting time, but who would have known, right? Like at 3:00.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So we postponed a meeting. Otherwise, we would have had two in this, since this last time we met.
But we'll start meeting with the support staff next, next, next year.
Next year, which will be here all too soon.
That's right. So things are going well.
All right, good. Then let's move on to number eight and we'll do eight one, remote school days.
So this is, this whole remote idea kind of came along with COVID. And some of it has really stuck around in a lot of school districts. So we can offer remote school days to our students and staff, providing that we have meals for those who want it. That's just kind of what we have to do. And it's counted as a school day. We've done this for several years. We're ready to do this. We have all the, what we call the remote school packets, ready to go for teaching and learning for two remote school days. I have David, our nutrition director, all set with those meals, ready to go. They're already packaged. All I need tonight is a vote in favor of two remote school days for this school year. And then tomorrow, I'll inform the community. The letter's been written. And then there's a form you fill out if you want a remote meal and how many. And then we'll figure out, David and I will figure out between now and the time that people say they want them, how we're going to get them to them. During the COVID days, we delivered them to that. And then the last few years, we sent them home with the kids and it worked out pretty good.
The day before?
The year before, yeah.
The day before, if you thought it was going to be it.
Well, what we're going to do this year is we get the, so the shelf-stable meals are good for a long, long time. So those can go home anytime after the approval. And I mentioned to the staff, if they have all their Blizzard bags ready to go, we need a three-day period next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, to get those meals home. With your blessing, any day after next Wednesday would be a remote snow day. And there's only two days of the week, Thursday, Friday, we go into breaks. So when we come back, the first two snow days. If you remember last year, we didn't have a snow day until March.
Right.
Right? Yeah. So we'll see what this winter looks like. But I'm hoping you'll approve it. So you do need to take a vote on a motion to, I guess my motion to you would recommend would be to vote, make a motion to put two remote school days onto the calendar in case of inclement weather. That would be enough for me to go ahead and say, "We're good to go."
So we're going to call it the first two?
It is only the first two.
Yeah.
So the first two.
Because the last couple of years, it's been the, well, one year it wasn't the first two because we had one super early one year.
You hadn't voted on it yet. That's what happened. That's exactly what happened. So hey, right now, here we are tonight. We only need next week to get those meals out. And Wednesday, we'd be good to go if all works well. And ironically, I asked Amanda, who likes to look at the weather way out into next year, which I think is funny for me, but that's okay. She has a snowstorm for next Thursday. So I said, "We'll get that for tonight."
What's, what's in these meals?
Good question. I had one in my old office, but I didn't, it didn't move to my new office. It's, yeah, it's shelf-stable. It's, yeah.
Yeah, they've sold it for 25 years now in case everybody wants to go into a bomb shelter. They haven't sailed, as a matter of fact, the last 25 years.
Can't wait to dig into that powder smell.
About 25 years.
And it, the, the meals don't, the number of people that want the meals doesn't affect our budget at all. It's all, it's all covered this year.
Correct, yeah. And that's basically, I think David's prepped for 50 because that was historically a number that worked for him. If we find we need more, we'll get them and we'll get them together and we'll get them to them.
But you still don't know what's in them?
I personally don't. I can give you the menu items if you, I mean, I probably should know exactly. The parents will. I don't have the menu list yet, but I know they put everything together.
I know. It's fuzzy and either as you are, you would not be interested, Jeanette.
Let's see.
Fruit cup. I'm sure there's a fruit cup in there.
There isn't, yeah, yeah.
And a granola bar, probably.
Yeah.
Maybe apple sauce, yeah.
Apple sauce, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was like lunchable, lunchable type things with non-perishables, right? Yeah, yeah.
Email Jeanette. She'll let us all know.
Chips.
Chips.
Chips or Cheez-Its or something like that. They don't do that.
If I can get a demo model, Jeanette, I'll let you know that it's on all his desk. If you go to see Jackie, you can take a look at it. I will put a demo model on there.
Bring one to the next room. Then we'll know and everybody will know.
It's a great question. I don't have a bunch. I did say, I'm curious. So thank you for getting me up on that one. It's appreciated.
Because I read the menus out there and I see one of them's got steamed broccoli. I love that. How do the kids do with that?
It's not in the remote meal.
I know that.
I think Judy's got a motion for us to...
I'll look for a motion to approve two remote school days for inclement weather for the coming year, for this year.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by CJ and Terry. Any further discussion? All set? All, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Paula.
As you all know, the paid family medical leave, um, the deductions for non-CBA employees, so admin substitutes, those deductions will start January twenty-five. So the total of the deduct, the contribution is one percent. The, it's mandated that the employer has to pay at least fifty percent of the, of the contribution. So, I am looking to say the employer will cover fifty percent and then the employee will cover the other fifty percent. And that will be starting in January. So I guess I just need to, do they have to vote on it or just?
I just wanted to.
Are you good for it?
Yes.
The law.
It's a law.
Yep, it starts, the deduction starts in January, but the, the, um, what am I looking for?
Coverage?
The benefits.
The whole benefit won't, won't start till May twenty-sixth.
They got to build up.
They got to build up, yeah. And the, um, teachers and ed techs, theirs won't start until the CBA expires, which is August thirty-first. So theirs will start in September, but everyone else has to start in January.
So they'll have this deducted from their pays?
Yeah, it's fifty percent, it'll be one percent total of their gross wages.
Okay, and do, is it a choice that they have or is it, they don't have a choice?
No.
Point five percent of the gross wages.
Point five.
Point five each, yes.
The other is the organization, yeah.
And it's, I could, we have to pay it quarterly.
So how is that going to look budget-wise for us?
We're going to put it in.
Well, and we did budget for it in this, in this budget.
Do you know any rough numbers for the people you'll be starting in January?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
If I can get you.
Yeah. But it's, it's, um, for, if anybody's watching, it's for the entire state of Maine, any, any employer in the state of Maine is doing this. Yeah.
It was on the news last week, pretty heavy.
Yeah, yeah.
Every employer?
Every employer.
If you have fifteen or more employees.
Well, I mean, there's a number, right? Okay, so McDonald's, Burger King or any place like that?
Fifteen, yeah.
Oh.
Shane's of Maine.
Shane's of Maine, yeah. All right, we'll see how that goes.
These affected employees know already?
Well, I wanted to come and, and, and talk to you and let you know about it, then I have a memo ready to go out and let them know.
How, how many do we have that are, how many do we have that are not, um, CBA?
So there's the administration and then I, we have six substitutes right now. And then, um, our I T coordinator.
And your, your helper.
And Jackie, that position.
So the people.
Twenty.
Okay.
Fifteen to twenty of us.
So if they're under, if they're under a collective bargaining contract?
Right, it stays in place until it expires.
Right. Even if people don't, aren't members of the union, it wouldn't make any difference, correct?
Right, right.
You, non-union members still work under the collective bargaining agreement, whether they're non-union or not?
Right.
Yeah, you're non-union or you're union, correct?
Yeah.
Well, thanks for updating and good luck on that one.
It will be a choice, because it's still, you know, they're still playing with, you know, some of the.
You've probably been to some of the workshops.
Another one tomorrow, because it keeps changing all the time. And I think they finally got it down packed, so we'll see. I'm not looking for it. Well, and the, and the state is going to, um, totally run the program. So if some, we have an employee that is going to use it, they go through the state, it's nothing that I have to handle, so.
Oh, that's a good.
That's good. No, no discretionary.
No, they, they. Yeah, they keep referring it to like unemployment. So when you apply for unemployment, you'll apply for the paid family medical leave kind of the same way.
Interesting.
Well, thank you for that, Paula.
Is, there must be a time limit for how much medical leave you can take, right?
They can have up to twelve weeks of paid.
Twelve weeks.
It can be used in increments if I hear the law right.
One day, yeah, incremented one day.
One day here, one day there, two days the next week, I see.
And, and this is family medical leave, so it's not just the employee having a medical issue?
Correct, and there's qualifying individuals and qualifying events that, correct.
And theirs, and the Maine is more, is more broad than the federal family medical leave, so. Their definition of family, yeah.
Unlike the, unlike the federal family medical leave, you burn your sick days first. And then your job's kind of guaranteed, but you could go unpaid if you don't have a lot of sick leave and something catastrophic happens to you or a loved one. This is different. It's, you don't, you don't have sick days to burn, it's more like, almost like a, think of it almost like a sick bank, but it's for compensation, not for time.
So do they use the sick days first under the contract?
They can use it in conjunction with.
It could be in tandem.
They could use both, but they could use just the paid, paid family medical leave.
So we might need to get extra substitutes. If people choose, I'm coming today, I won't come in two weeks, I'm going to be out, so.
You still need a qualifying event, it's not like personal, it's not a need to.
It's not a personal thing, I know. I know, but you.
They're qualifying events.
I know, but you can call in and say, I got a terrible cold, right?
No.
Well, that's different.
It's going to be a qualifying event, just like F M L A.
You got to break your leg or something.
Well, if you have to take care of a family member or someone you consider a family member, that, you know, that's.
Consider a family member.
Or if they need, and you have to bring someone to a doctor's appointment that's a parent or, you know.
That's pretty, this is all pretty broad.
It is very broad, isn't it?
Yeah, Maine's been pretty broad.
That's what I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And the state is the one that will make the decision if it is a qualifying event, not me.
We stay out of it.
So that's, that's the important piece to note.
Yes.
You know, with our A E S family, we know that they're a group of people who genuinely want to be here. And for them to make up sub-notes so that they can go and, you know, do a frivolous something, they're not going to do it.
No, right.
You're right, very right.
They're just not, so at the end of the day, you know, I, I don't see that this is going to be an impact to our organization at all, only to the people who have to pay, um, toward it.
Really, the only impact will be in this coming budget for the entire organization at a half a percent. And that's just math, we'll just have to add it into the budget because we're responsible for the other half. We being the organization is responsible for the other half, they're responsible for the first half. Or I'm just, you know, as an employee, I would be responsible for that.
Exactly, yeah.
But the people in the state have their criteria and they'll make the decision as to whether this person really could, take the time off, qualify to take the time off, oh, well, that's.
Hangbills don't count.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, but you wouldn't believe what people.
Oh, yes, I would.
I thought it was important for Paula to give you an update because it was in the news. It is the law, we really don't have a choice. And she's done a great job keeping current and it's been a moving target, she's had a million webinars. So we hope the paint dried on it.
Yes.
I see too.
Wow.
Paint's dried on us until we have a new governor or a new whatever come along and.
Well, I think that probably, legislature is probably going to get a lot of backlash from, um, employees all over the state. I would think they would be, I don't know.
Yeah.
There are a lot of, a lot of businesses that they're going to find this to be a really big expense for them.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, are we all done with paid family medical leave? Let's move on then to, uh, eight three, and this is our budget schedule.
I made a hard copy for you and everybody in the room. This was emailed as part of your packet as a draft schedule. Of course, with your permission, after you've thoroughly reviewed your dates, I'll go to the warrant finance and the select board for these dates to see if these work for them. Fortunately for us, the select board had already picked a day for a town meeting for both budgets. Judy and I happened to be at that meeting of the select board. So basically, the select board has identified stat, I'm going all the way to the end, Saturday the twelfth at nine A M. So then you got to work backwards.
Yeah.
So that would be with good weather, and last year we pulled it off even with crazy weather. That would be when we would have our, our budget voted on by the town and it will be a joint town and, and school budget meeting. But if you'll take a look, one-nine would be a regular school committee meeting with a budget right, with budget review right after. In that school committee meeting, I'll also do my annual, what are the goals? What's the pie chart look like? Has anything changed? I mean, we know that roughly eighty percent of what we do is contractual, which gives us really twenty percent of the budget that we actually really make a difference with. So I'll do that in that meeting, um, and then we'll go right in to working with warrant and finance. And then you can see the different dates that we have in here. We meet again in January on a Thursday, try to keep it to Thursdays. If there isn't a school meeting, then it goes right into a budget meeting. We'll also, when there are school committee meetings, such as Thursday, two thirteen, twenty-five, the regular school committee, then budget meeting, we won't have the celebration and learning and the progress monitoring. We will have progress monitoring next month because Brandon has some, some information on science and special ed he wanted to show you. He just couldn't be here tonight and I told him, don't worry about it, we will do that next month. But then after that, until the budget's done, we just do business and then we go into budget because the budget takes quite a bit of time of our evening. So that's the, the thought behind that. Take a look, it gets us all the way out to, I have a placeholder meeting at the beginning. It's always good to have a placeholder meeting if we need it on the three, six, twenty-five, may not need it. And then these timelines fit for the final warrant, the selectment for signatures. And then the public forum, I, I picked three twenty-seven as our public forum, where warrant finance and the school committee would come to the gym and take care of any questions they had to. So if you are okay with this, I will follow this and work with warrant finance and the select board and Jennifer to make sure that these dates work. And if there's a big issue with anybody who would be at the table, which is really warrant and finance, I'll let you know. So I'll just, I'll be the liaison on that for you and I'll, I'll consider, it's always working if I will consider this the, the, the schedule. So we hear different, how's that?
Yep, sounds good.
Good.
Okay. All right. You got a copy, you can take that back, all right, thanks.
All right. Who's, uh, business correct? I've lost my.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Miranda.
Yes, thank you, guys.